Elder Person Collins was elected for the first time back in April of 2020, and she's never sat at a common council meeting. So, everything's electronic and IT made some changes to enhance the experience. We're still trying to figure out how a lot of that works sometimes. So, if there's a problem, if you can't hear, something doesn't come across just quite right, just raise your hand, you know, I'd love the interruption. The other thing, too, COVID has been an incredibly difficult part of our, all of our lives, whatever you think about it, one way or the other. Everyone that's sitting up here is vaccinated, just to be perfectly clear about that, okay? So, with that being said, this is the common council meeting to be held on Tuesday, June 15th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Would you please call the order? Roll, sorry.
Elder Person Collins?
Present.
Elder Person Bailey?
Present.
Elder Person Akers?
Present.
Elder Person Kastner?
Present.
Elder Person Sarian?
Present.
Item B is the opening prayer. We have Chaplain Leggett.
Let us pause for prayer. Almighty and eternal God, we call upon you this evening for your guidance. It is so good to be together again this evening, where we can again joyfully be with each other. This has been a very trying time for so many of us. We continue to pray for those living in fear of this virus, fear for themselves, and fear for their loved ones. May your spirit give all of us a sense of calmness and peace. We ask for your protection for all those who are sick, for the families of all who have died, for our healthcare workers and first responders who are working tirelessly. As we now look with hope, as we end our sheltering, allow us to get back to the way it was. And lastly, dear Lord, we ask for your guidance on this common council, as they gather to make decisions in the ways that are best for this community. God bless us and the citizens of this community. Amen.
Item C is the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we stand, I just want everybody to know that when you do a Zoom call, you never stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, it's, I think, an honor for all of us not to see each other's belt buckles like we did the very first time. So, if you would join me while we pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item D, I'd entertain a motion to approve the May 18th, 2021 common council meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Much, Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Elder Person Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Under Mayor's report, just a couple of things. We have some very special guests in the audience this evening, the new store manager?
Yes, store director.
Director, sorry, that's right, of the new Festival Foods store on 27th Street. We'll be getting to him in just one minute, and then Scott will talk a little bit about the Fourth of July. Festival Foods this year is donating $15,000 to our Fourth of July fireworks. I want to, and I think everyone that's sitting up here is extremely thrilled by your generosity. Greenfield is known for having, other than the Big Bang downtown, which it sounds like they're not having this year. Greenfield's known for having probably the best fireworks, I think, and honestly, I think in southeastern Wisconsin.
I've heard we're bigger than the, are better than the Big Bang by several people, too.
Yeah, so we typically like to have two, three, four grand finales as, as the fireworks display, as opposed to just a couple going off and then a short grand finale. But just one second. I want to, under Mayor's report, I want to thank everyone that volunteered for Dan Jansenfest. We made the decision about two months ago, just kind of looking at the numbers and the statistics and where things were going, as to whether or not it would be safe, a safe outlet for, for visitors to the festival. Didn't have the rides this year, did have music, it was extremely well attended. I just want to point out how anxious people were to get back. We, Elder Person Collins and I and folks from the Park and Rec Department, we usually get the bartender on the Sunday doo-wop daddy shift, it's like between 2:00 and 6:00. I've done it before, I know Scott's done it before. Typically, the clientele, it's kind of oldies, you know, they bring a water bottle in their purse, and it's, which is okay, we encourage them to stay hydrated. But the bar is not usually very active historically. And the attendance is, while it's, it's robust, it's certainly not like some of the other entertainment that happens. This year, I don't know what we made as far as tips, but it was in the hundreds of dollars. And they were drinking, so.
We more than tripled.
We more than tripled our normal revenue, and people that were there had a safe, responsible, really good time. It was clear that people were, were grateful to be back and about.
And the tips went to the Park and Recs department.
And the tips went to the Park and Rec department, so, which, so it was a good thing.
For community, right?
I wanted to thank everybody at Dan Jansenfest, and before we talk about the Fourth of July, I want to thank everyone that's been helping with that. It has not been an easy year, not knowing what the future holds, trying to, you know, be a fortune teller months ahead of the curve to see where things are going. We've made the decision to have a Fourth of July parade, we've made the decision to have fireworks, essentially made the decision based on the kinds of data and statistics and all that other stuff that we read at great length all the time, that it should be, it should be a good event. I want to thank everyone for their patience. There is no one, I don't, I think everyone that's sitting up here is very, very grateful to be back and sitting up here the last year with all sorts of things going on, COVID just being one of them. It's nice to kind of get back to some sense of normalcy, and all of us, I think, truthfully appreciate people that, that came out tonight. It's good to see real people again, okay? With that, under Mayor's report, I'd like to introduce Scott Jack Wish, who's our Park and Rec Director. He has a couple of special guests behind him, I'll let Scott lead off.
Thanks, Mayor, and it's very exciting to be back here in person and seeing all the smiling faces. But the Fourth of July will kick off on Sunday, July 4th, with the parade, 60th and Leighton to Conkle Park, approximately one mile in length. The High Noon Harleys will again roar down Leighton Avenue at the beginning at noon, with the official parade start set for 12:15. Our 2021 Parade Grand Marshall is Vietnam veteran, retired Master Sergeant Larry Elliott, United States Marine Corps. If you like Corvettes, the Badger State Vets are back for this year's parade and will also be on display at the park following the parade. If you like high-flying BMX bike tricks, the BMX stunt team are also part of this year's parade and are back. Echoes of Camp Randall, the UW marching band, will be returning, as well as the Greenfield High School and Whittlemore High School marching band will be part of this year's parade. Following the parade, the opening ceremony will be held at the amphitheater, followed by the Echoes of Camp Randall performance. Paul's Great Ice Cream Giveaway will be at the AMP House for a limited number, I think we have 1,500 pieces of ice cream to distribute, and that will be done at the AMP House by the Greenfield Fire and Greenfield Police Department. The evening entertainment is the Avery Grauels Band, which is a blues rock sound from the Quad Cities. But, of course, the highlight of the day is our fireworks display, as the mayor said. It is one of the best shows in southeastern Wisconsin, both in size and in volume, but this year's show, starting at 9:45, has even been enhanced even more by a generous donation from Festival Foods. So, here to, to tonight to present a check and talk about that is Lincoln Burmeister, the store director for the Greenfield store. Lincoln?
Thank you very much for taking the time to meet with me this evening. I know, as a store director for Festival Foods, this opportunity doesn't present itself always to us in such a kind way. The community, in terms of enriching our lives already, is better than we've experienced in Milwaukee thus far. Just look at the 326 different associates we have signed on to work at the Greenfield store already, and we're hiring more each and every day. We have not had that kind of turnout anywhere else, and we are so thankful for this community to help get the store moving for us and help the lives of the people that live in this community the most. So, we continue this partnership, hopefully, in the future with the fireworks. I know that we do 25 different communities within the state of Wisconsin. Having this can be the biggest one and the best one of all is my goal, and from what I've heard so far, that's not going to be hard to beat, so. I appreciate all of you and your generosity and what you've offered us as a store to come in with open arms, and hopefully, we can do the same with your community and the people that matter most to you and the charitable donations that they're interested in, because if you have anything that you need us to get involved in, please reach out. We're asking each of our associates what they want, what they need in their home communities, around their siblings, their friends, their families, what matters most to them, and that's what we care about. We're in the people business, we don't just sell groceries, so. Thank you for all of you and your opportunities with us.
You need to keep your caramel rice cakes stocked, the regular size, they are in my office.
I brought them right there for you. I remembered from the meeting, I was not going to forget those.
I love you. I go to Highway 100 to get them, and they're always out.
Yep, I was not going to forget them for you.
Can we take a picture with the presentation and the check, everybody? Can we do that?
Sure.
I love this store. I go there once a week, at least.
Someone on top and someone on the bottom.
Okay, yeah, I'm short.
Yes, I can seat for 15.
We can look tall this way, right, up on top here? Oh, I love you, I love you. Thank you.
I don't know where the camera is, so.
I, I look tall now.
That's true.
Okay.
He wants to hug you. All right, three, two, one. Yeah, you get to move more. We close our eyes.
Don't you have to be the silly one, too?
Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome.
You will see me, definitely. You will see me.
Thank you, totally.
Thank you so much.
Guys got to try these stories.
Well, you guys shared.
Not your thing? I will share.
He just took the check with him, so I'm not sure if that's all.
I mean, I may not either, but these are good.
We got a picture of it, Mike, we can auto deposit. Yeah.
One other thing, too, before we start the meeting, other beers now, this is kind of announcements, too, I know there's a lot of things to kind of go over tonight. So, the AMP next Tuesday is the Britons, right?
Correct.
So, the Tuesday night meeting, the Tuesday night concert series, that's from 5:00 to?
6:00 to 8:00, 6:00 to 8:00.
What's that?
9:30, 9:30?
Uh huh. 6:00 to 9:30. So, throughout the summer, we'll continue to have the concert series on Tuesday nights, which is a good thing. There's also tree nights next Thursday?
Thursdays.
Thursdays, and there are three Food Truck Friday events. Almighty Vinyl will be coming in July, which is a great concert.
July 16th, July 30th.
Awesome.
August 13th.
I want to thank the sponsors there as well, which are Meyer?
Meyer.
Kapor?
Kapor.
Intruson Financial.
Intruson Financial.
We have movies, too.
Oh, we'll be on September 11th this year. The various.
We have the movies in the park, too, I think that's Waterstone?
We encourage you to go to our website. The expectation last year, or two years ago, I guess now, for the Britons, it was the most people that I'd ever seen at any event, and it was just a great time, so.
Yeah, they're good.
I know. So, are there any aldermanic reports this evening?
We're here.
He's smiling.
Mr. Bailey indicated that the tree commission report will be in writing and distributed to all of us.
It will be in writing, and I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, that we are very grateful we're discussing the MMSD grant that we got of over $150,000 to plant trees in our city so we can keep up with the Emerald Ash Bar, which has been destroying almost 20% of our tree canopy.
How many of those trees are already in place?
I just signed a contract for more.
How many?
How many? Within the last two years, we've done?
Within the last two years, we've done about 600 trees.
And there's a lot more coming.
Yeah.
I just signed another.
And almost, that will be almost 500 this year, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Any other aldermanic reports right now? Any other announcements? Citizen commentary? I've got, Randall Hoyley, you have a claim, right?
Yes.
And, signed need bifocals, Gary Sima of 2161 West Leighton Avenue, is that, okay. So, if you could go up to this, are you here for any specific item on the agenda?
Um, and for the, are you closing on Leighton Avenue for Labor Day?
Okay, can we have you speak at that time? Or you can do it now if you want to.
No, I'll say.
Sure, go ahead, sure, you can. Just give me one second while I figure out where.
My name's Gary, I own Bunks and Beds right next door to Harley Davidson on Leighton Avenue, and we've been there for 31 years, and we were just informed that they are gonna get a permit to close the street over Labor Day weekend, from 60th to 68th or something like that. And we are the only landlocked business on that street, so we're basically shut down, and Labor Day is the busiest weekend of our year. And we've worked with Harley over the years with John, the previous owner, and other stuff during their fest, you know, their parties and all their stuff and everything. But as far as Labor Day is concerned, we have no access to our building, and this happened where we've worked with the city before and come to a solution on how to figure out how to get people into our store with the street closed, this and that. So, I don't know if anybody's aware that they've, have they already got the permit, or they?
I'm not sure if they received the permit from Milwaukee County yet, I thought they applied for it. Jeff, do you know? Does anybody know?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, it's one of the items tonight.
Tonight, we get the permit and then?
We apply for the permit on behalf of the business, but the county issues the permit. Have you talked to House of Harley Davidson at all?
Uh, no, we, they, we, we just leased the building. Evidently, he has talked to the owners of the building, which they don't want to have anything to do, because we leased the building from them.
Right.
And we're the ones that are out of business during the six days that they're requesting to be closed.
Okay.
So, we'd like to come up with a solution to fix the problem. Last time, basically, I had worked with the former police chief, and we came up with a reasonable solution, this and that, but I'm looking.
We'll make that same committee, same commitment again to you?
Well, I don't know what they want to do. Basically, I don't know what they're, you know, what, I just heard that they want, they put in a permit to close the street again.
Right.
And I'm trying to figure out how we can resolve the problem where I'm not closed for six days over the busiest time of the year.
At least you can talk.
Okay.
If that's possible, if somebody from City Hall can work with us.
We'll work with you.
Come up with a solution, and like I said last time, they just assigned the police chief, and we got it figured out, this and that.
We have a really good police chief and command staff over there, they'll work with you, and they'll reach out to Mark at the House of Harley Davidson to try to figure something out for you, okay?
So, that's, we're just trying to nip it in the bud early to make sure we can either stay in business or, you know, any other solutions or something, or come up with something that will satisfy both parties.
All right, all right, thank you very much.
Okay, so, I'm assuming I will be hearing from someone from the city, or?
Christie, do you have his contact information? Christie usually handles the large event applications, so if we can, if she has your contact information, she can reach out to the police chief and Mark at House of Harley Davidson, and they can reach out to you, okay?
My phone number's on our website as well.
Pardon me?
My phone number, do you have a business card, or else my phone number is on our website?
Okay.
Or do you have a business card with you?
I don't have one with me, no.
Okay. My phone number's on the website, on our, on our city website, you can call me.
Okay.
Okay.
Christie Porter.
Yeah, I'll write that down, yeah. Okay, right, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, there's no more citizen public hearings. Item I, one, is a public hearing on a special use permit for Oak Hill Massage, oh, sorry. So, you're, you can, if you want, you want to speak now? Yeah, there is a specific agenda item, but you can speak now if you'd like.
My name is Randall Hoyley, I live at 4335 West Morgan Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all the council members, to allow me to speak on this. Speaking in regards to agenda, item 40, paragraph B, which would, is listed on the agenda as a sewer overflow claim, I would interject that a storm drain overflow would be more appropriate. I lived at that property for more than 20 years, I have over 25 years of construction experience, including 23 years in operating engineers, so this incident, I can qualify as an expert witness on, okay? The, the information I requested was the date of construction, which began on West Morgan Avenue, which was leading up to the events of on or about August 20th, when my garage was flooded, as you will see in my claim, I have extensive photos. My question would be, well, backing up to the construction of Morgan Avenue, when the construction began, filter fabric was installed into the storm drain catch basins, and what that does is leaves, is to prevent any kind of debris from going into the storm sewer, okay? Once that fabric has clogged up, it prevents water from going into the storm, which was the case during the duration of Morgan Avenue, where there was certain occasions when a storm sewer that was at my driveway, I could stand and water past my ankles, because the filter fabric was clogged up. Okay, fast forwarding to this, around July of August, or July of 2020, the contractor hired by the city removed the existing storm drains entirely, including the underground piping. At that, prior to that time, there was a storm sewer right at the base of my driveway, okay? There was a large rainstorm on or about August 20th, which the water had nowhere to go. So, my question would be, was there an alternative temporary drainage plan by the city, by the city engineer, or by anybody, to disperse the stormwater when there was no catch basins or storm sewers on the street? Now, if you're building a new subdivision, you can let the water just go where it wants till you're done with the sewers, but when you're going from 49th Street all the way down to 41st in one, in one sweeping project without any temporary drainage, my question to you would be, where was the water supposed to go? And that's what, you can review my claim. My position is that the water came out my driveway undermined my garage slab, the definition of undermining is basically the dirt that's underneath my garage slab has been washed away, okay? So, that's, I'd appreciate your consideration when you review my claim, executive session, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, there aren't any other, okay, public hearings, public hearing on the special use permit for Oak Hill Massage, a proposed massage therapy business to be located at 51776 Streets, submitted by Jacob Stark Weather, seeing business as Oak Hill Massage. This is to approve the resolution and to approve a site plan review, which is essentially for the entire property, which has other co-tenants. Christie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This application is for a massage therapist within this new salon suites, this is the former Pier One building on 76th Street, or tucked behind 76th Street, it's Zone C4 massage therapist, there are special uses in that zoning district. They're leasing, just again, a small suite, about 150 square feet in area, proposed hours are 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. They will employ or have two trained and licensed massage therapists with over seven years of experience, they anticipate about nine hours per day of client services, and, you know, typical massage therapist service, services, Swedish massage, massage, excuse me, deep tissue massage, each approximately 50 to 110 minutes in length. Off-street parking, we do always put this in the resolution, our code is a little excessive with requirements for some particular uses, but the code says 104 spaces are needed for all suites within this area, there's a high turnover, feel very comfortable that they really don't need 104, they are providing 47 spaces on site, and then you can see the footprint layout for all of the suites that are going to be going in, into the new space here. Planning Commission recommended approval at its May meeting, and we've received no letters of objection to date.
Is there anyone here to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this item? Is there anyone here to speak for, against, or for informational purposes with regard to this item?
Make a motion to close. Make a motion to close a public hearing.
About the person Kastner.
Second.
To close a public hearing, seconded by Elder Person Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented and the site review.
I will make a motion to approve A and B, the resolution and the site review for Oak Hill Massage.
Motion by Elder Person Kastner, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Elder Person Akers, would you please call?
Elder Person Collins?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Kastner?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Under old business, appointments to various committees and commissions, I can't, I don't think there is somebody for the train commission, was there somebody?
We do have.
Did we have somebody?
Andrew's going to become a regular member.
Okay, so, this is to appoint Andrew Derzwicki as a regular member, he's currently an alternate?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to confirm.
So, moved.
Much, Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Elder Person Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under new business, I received a letter of recommendation, resignation, excuse me, from Richard Kaza, the Board of Public Works, he and his wife are moving. Richard's been on the Board of Public Works for a very, very long time, a note of appreciation needs to go to him, signed by all of us if we?
He actually was very qualified for the position, it's nice to have people on that committee that have qualifications in what they're talking about.
It's important.
It is.
To have that kind of background, so that was very saddening. Also received a letter of resignation from Christine Helene on the planning commission, Christine has moved out of the city. Same goes with her, she, I think she sat on that for 15 years, 16 years. She was actually my, I think, my first appointment. She was arguing with me.
I know.
About something, remember?
She kind of got what she wanted.
Well, she was arguing, and I was like, okay, if you think you can do better, why don't you sit on the planning commission? And she sat on it for 16 years, and she provided a lot of valuable insight, so. Item three is appointments to various committees and commissions. So, I have three people that have expressed an interest in the planning commission, I would like to meet them, it's one of the most critical bodies in the city with its recommendations.
Other than the tree commission.
Other than the tree commission. This is true.
And you notice, everyone on the tree commission is very qualified in trees. They are. That is a good thing.
They are very, and Bruce, Elder Person Bailey has become almost an expert on trees.
My dad was an arborist.
Was your dad?
Was he really? He was.
Get out, really?
Oh, no wonder. Now I understand.
Okay, going to item 3B, little I, three members of the Public Library Board for a term to expire July 1st of 2024. The current members, Robin Brun, Richard Lamy, and Creston Fleming, all want to be reappointed. I'd entertain a motion to confirm those reappointments.
I move to confirm.
I'll second.
Motion by Elder Person Sarian, second by Elder Person Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item B, little, double little I, is a recommendation to reappoint Susan DeWitt from, this is from? this is from the Greenfield School District, entertain a motion to confirm that.
I move to confirm.
By Elder Person Sarian, second by Elder Person Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I don't think I have a member for the Board of Health. And I don't have an alternate member to the Tree Commission. Or do have? I can't say anymore. Chloe Selkirk. I'd like to appoint Chloe Selkirk as the alternate to the Tree Commission. Entertain a motion to confirm.
So moved.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Castner.
Person?
Chloe Selkirk.
She has something, works with the schools, has something to do with arborists or something.
Okay. Seconded by Castner, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under C, Council Appointments, one member to the Board of Public Works, this is a council appointment.
I do have somebody I'd like to nominate, his name is John Rivera. He currently is on the Board of Review right now. Board of Appeals. Yeah.
His background is in real estate.
Right now.
He's in real estate?
I believe so. I don't, I was going to bring his information with me, I thought I have my file here with, about him. Unfortunately, I must have it at home. I thought my file was in my office, and it's not.
Do we have a Board of, we have a Board of Public Works meeting this month?
Yes.
Two weeks?
Next week.
Next week. Okay, so, Mr. Rivera's.
Jeff, have you talked to him yet, or?
I have not. So, these are really important, I mean.
They're critical.
The Board of Public Works is responsible for the oversight of millions of dollars every year. So, it's kind of, it's important that we probably know a little bit about him. I have no objection, I mean, I know you've talked about him in the past. But I don't know him, and I don't know if he's, you know, not.
I can bring him in, or John, Jeff, I will bring him into your office. I can bring him into you and introduce you and John both to him.
Let's put it on the next agenda. Can we put it on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Board of Public Works is actually going to meet twice in a row?
So, everybody's meeting again, the, yeah, so, can we do that? Okay, next agenda, was that fair with everybody?
Fair.
There is a special common council meeting coming up on the. On the twenty-ninth of June, in the event, which is not, is two weeks away, right? I, I'm sure that that agenda will be populated with things as we go along, because we only have one meeting per month during the summer, and there's always things going on.
Forty-third Street vacation discontinuance.
Yeah, so, maybe we can, if everybody gets it together, we can maybe do it on that meeting, or it'll be in July. Okay? Item four is a resolution to disallow the claim received from Attorney Robert Erdman on behalf of Lawrence Zakhar. We received, didn't we receive an updated amended complaint today? We did. My only question is, and I should have reached out to Insurance Council, is whether we should actually take action on this, or if we would not, since it came in, kind of really after the hundred and twenty days under the statute. Statutory notice was way after the fact. Why don't we put this, keep this open for the twenty-ninth as well? This, we should probably put on this.
Do we have a certain amount of time to disallow it?
So, you have a hundred and eighty days after noticeable claim to file your claim. This one was three years.
Yeah, we can just.
But we don't have to take action?
No.
Within?
So, it gets complicated, because there's, there's all sorts of, there's a remedy in the event that it's after the hundred and eighty days, but it's not one that's usually filed by the court, generally speaking. Right, and to Alderman Castner's question, I believe the actual notice of claim that we got in this case is still within our time period to respond, even if we waited to the end of the month.
Okay.
So, that should go on the next agenda. Five is a resolution allowing the claim received from Linda Vopal. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Castner. So, this was a situation where one of our DPW trucks hit a car, and I want to apologize if Linda here. This probably should have been taken care of.
Allowable, yeah.
I think maybe she provided two estimates, do you want to put a dollar amount in your motion?
There was an estimate, there were. Yeah, there's a number in the resolution.
Oh, okay.
It's two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
So, that was the lower, the lower.
Correct. Okay, motion was made by Akers, was there a second?
Yeah.
Second by Elder Person Castner, would you please call?
Elder Person Collins?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Akers?
Aye.
Elder Person Castner?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Item six, applications for original and renewal operator licenses expiring June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. Entertain a motion to approve those applications, cover show the disclaiming language.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Castner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item seven is application for amusement licenses expiring July thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, subject to everything else.
By Elder Person Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Sarian, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eight is an application for a twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Class B liquor license for basically the honey berry and pancakes and cafe that's going into the old Baker Square. The description of the premises is described in the agenda, and I don't want to read it all.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person.
Only for information, did they come back with some kind of more appealing architecture?
They did, they, they proposed what we had recommended.
That always works better, huh?
Motion was made.
It worked, it worked well.
All in, motion was made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item nine, temporary Class B retailer license application from the Greenfield Professional Firefighters, but now events and charities for an event to be held on, at the community center, right?
September twenty.
For the charitable beer and wine tasting on September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
By A, here is a second by Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item ten is Leveer's request an extension of the licensed premises of their combination Class B liquor license to add the west side of the building for a smoking lounge patio at fifty-one oh five West Cold Spring. This went through planning without, without a problem.
I have some questions, do we need to make the motion first, or? I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Castner.
Is there going to be music out there, because that's a very residential area?
I don't think so. There's no music.
I did bring it up at the Planning Commission, and it has to be at a very low level.
So, so the owner's here, and Mark is here, if there are any questions. But I would just say that he's run a very, very tight ship from the old days when it was the international tap. I think what he's trying to do is, he's trying to get the people from congregating outside the front door and smoking, and just finding a, he's trying to enhance the aesthetics of the establishment.
You don't use it all.
Thank you.
But the record, in case someone is after him, will not allow loud music.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, good, all right. There was a motion, was there a second?
Yes.
Second by Castner, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Levin is approving change of agent from Megan Pavlik to Mary Lou Gilmore for the Walgreens in South Hunter Nate Street, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Elder Person Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twelve is discussion decision to approve an application by the city Milwaukee, by the city for Milwaukee County Department of Transportation, special event permit on behalf of the House of Harley Davidson for their Labor Day event on August thirty-first through September seventh. We had the owner, just, we had the owner of Bunks and Beds, is that right? Beds and Bunks, I was getting, I'm getting dyslexic as I get older, so. Bunks and Beds, the minute should reflect that you spoke during public citizen commentary, that previously the police department worked with you to, to make sure that your business was accessible during the event, or there was some alternative way of, right? And we've informed, thank you, and we've informed Kristi that she'll reach out to Mark, who's at the House of Harley Davidson. He's the one that kind of does the organizing over there. He'll work closely with our police department to make sure that something could be worked out for you. Does that sound reasonable?
Motion.
You don't want to go out of business during your business time of the year, right? I totally understand. Right.
Understandable.
And that's always been a priority whenever we've, we've done this. Right. Understood, okay.
I am excited to having all these people come to our city and spend money at our business. I'll make a motion to approve the application from the City of Milwaukee and Department of Transportation for a special event permit on behalf of House of Harley for their Labor Day event.
Motion by Elder Person Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Elder Person Sarian.
We have discussion?
Under discussion, Elder Person Akers?
Are we shutting both lanes down? And what are we doing for my subdivision on the other side now that only has their horrible entrance off of Sixtieth Street by Myers, where they have to fight traffic there?
The same thing we did the last time, I think. I think the, I think the neighborhood, and I will speak, the Police Department and the Fire Department to ensure that there's emergency access. And the House of Harley Davidson has typically provided security to prevent people from getting into the neighborhood and using it as a cut through our parking lot. So, what usually ends up happening, truthfully, for the people in that neighborhood, many of them go to the event, and they invite people over. And the biggest problem has been for people that are friends, or somebody that live in the subdivision, that want to park there. I understand that there are some people, there's one, Dave, I think, we're probably thinking of at the end of.
Well, there's, there's other ones, I, I, he's, he's quite vocal, yes.
Yes, he's a very vocal.
But there are other vocal people in that neighborhood that I can't.
There are. So, that's always the trade-off with events like this, right? We try to do whatever we can to bring people into the community, because the more people that are in the community, the more money that gets spent within the community. So, there is that trade-off. I can list probably ten, fifteen people that every time there is a Harley Davidson event of any stature, that typically call me or email me. Especially when the lane, when the roads are closed, but it's usually the same ten or fifteen. Now, are a lot of people inconvenienced, because they have to take alternative routes down, like Cold Spring or, or Edgerton? Yes, there's no question that that happens. But it's a, it, so, it's, it's in your hands, guys, I mean.
I have some other questions, too.
Sure.
I don't know how this gentleman here, sorry, was, was notified. I think he probably knows from past experience to expect this stuff. But were the other businesses across the street on Leighton notified? I know, like, I think Gameboard Barristers has moved or out of business now, I think.
They went out of business.
But I know I've, in the past, I've gotten calls from the bank, because they've had issues. And a lot of these businesses in the past, in previous years, they were notified when John was the owner. But the current ownership doesn't always reach out to these businesses with this stuff, and.
So, it's absolutely imperative, and I think Kristi will probably tell this to Mark, that those communications be made with the other businesses that are within that stretch. Some of them do very well as a result of this.
And some do not.
And some don't. It was my understanding of the credit union that is at the end of, did very well with its ATM, because it was the closest ATM, but, or it didn't have fees or something, I don't, but that was a long time ago, so I don't know. But I don't.
I know there's been issues with parking over there, you know.
So, it's a huge burden, and it can be a huge opportunity, right? And House of Harley Davidson absolutely has to, as a condition of our cooperation, make sure that the folks that are along that stretch are, are taking care of.
And doing the burnouts.
There are people that live in the apartments over there that have to get in, right?
And doing like the burnouts and stuff like that, that they.
Burnouts are bad, the, the, what do you call it? The, the thing where you can get on your motorcycle and go as fast as you possibly can.
Yeah.
Is a bad thing.
It's quite loud.
It's very loud, especially when it's blasting down Leighton Avenue. So, those kinds of things are. So, the other thought was, and we kind of went through all this, it was months ago, but do you just shut half the road down, or the whole road down? What they found is when they shut half the road down, that it was, it was extremely dangerous. And there were people jutting in and out, and it was just not a safe experience. I think both our police and fire departments recommended that the entire stretch be closed down. So.
I would like fencing if you tried.
They had, they had great plan, I mean, so there is, everyone within the city goes through the action plan, right? With regard to every, almost every contingency we can think of, with regard to traffic control and pedestrian control and access to neighborhoods and all of those things. And the new owner, there's a whole plan, right? There has to be.
Oh, I know there is, I just.
So, the challenge is.
Issues.
Yeah, the challenge is going to be next year, because Sixtieth is going to be closed, the bridge over.
The freeway.
The freeway will be, actually, at the end of this year, it'll be closing. They'll be demolishing, I think, over the course of the winter and replacing it next year. That's still going on, right, Jeff, that hasn't changed?
Yep, that's correct.
So, Elder Person Bailey?
When are we going to close it down? From when to when?
I think they're asking for the thirty-first through the seventh.
And the thirty-first is what day of the week?
It's a Monday.
I remember at one time to reduce the amount of, you know.
Inconvenience.
Inconvenience for the people in Pam's district over there, that we, I believe we said that they could close it down, but not on Monday, I think we went to a Wednesday.
Yeah, so one of the issues is that they, they, I think, people start coming in on Wednesday, and usually Monday and Tuesday is when they set up everything, because it's.
When does it open officially?
I don't know, I don't remember. There's another issue, too, the school starts.
Yeah.
At the high school, then, so that's another issue.
We've had it cleaned up before, school starts before.
Right, and typically, a lot of the parking is at the school.
Yep.
So, they have to get, they have to figure all that stuff out, right? It's not just, oh, we'll just wing it.
So, right now, I'm, I would be in favor of closing it down from Wednesday through Sunday, and.
Beginning on Tuesday, it's beginning on Tuesday, the thirty-first, through Tuesday, September seventh.
The event, the actual event is Tuesday through Monday, the sixth.
But it's closed.
So, two, so when they, they break down on Labor Day, the road is usually open by Tuesday. It's just a question of whether the vendors have their stuff out of there typically. Memorial Day or Labor Day is not the busiest time. It's usually the Sunday and the Saturday that are the prime time. I think they're just going through Monday, I think it starts on Wednesday.
It's Tuesday.
I, well, the weekend may start, I think.
I was wrong, the thirty-first is Tuesday, I was.
I think part of the reason the seventh is there is because they work during the night to get it taken down, so they can have it open in the morning.
The event, this is the OS. The event, this is the OSC application, which
Okay, I guess.
will come forward before the council at a future date, but they do have, the event starts Tuesday, the 31st at 9:00 AM.
Thank you.
Uh, excuse me for interrupting, but, um, I noticed you had mentioned that closing half the street in opposed to all the street was dangerous, this and that. That's why I went with the old police chief through this and that. And you're suggesting that, uh, that not be done again, that you close the whole street?
I'm not suggest, that's the, so I don't make those kinds of suggestions because I don't have the competence to make that decision. But what they said was that closing half the street was a bad idea, and they wouldn't wanna ever do that again.
So if they do, as you are talking, close the street from whatever day to whatever day, close the whole street, both sides, where does that put me?
Not, not working that day or that week.
Well, that's their busiest time of year.
I, no, I'm, I'm not.
So that, those are the things that have to be resolved, I mean, they've been resolved two or three or four times over the course of fifteen.
Like I said, we've been there thirty-one years and gone through everything you can think imaginable, so.
Right, so that's, I, I suspect that that can be worked out again. But clearly, I'm not the one to work it out, it's, it's the, our emergency service people.
I just wanted to clarify that.
And it's the people of the House of Harley-Davidson, so.
I just wanted to clarify that you're not gonna, you know, unanimously say, okay, we're gonna close the street and, you know.
I don't think anybody up here was gonna unanimously say, we wanna put bunks and beds out of business after thirty-one years.
I appreciate that.
For Harley right.
Right.
There's no logic to cutting it down at, you know, just after his entrance, you know? Letting people get back there? I'm just looking at the map of it, you know?
So honest to God, there, so the, the police department and the fire department and working with Public Works have, they sit down, they go through all of it, they talk to the businesses, they, they figure out the plan. So it's very difficult for us up here, because they've been on the ground, they've gone through this routine before for the five-year events, right? And a number of annual events. I would honestly think it's best to leave it in their hands. And if there's a concern, certainly reach out to, um, the chief or the assistant chief or somebody in command staff. I've sat through those meetings and I don't memorize them, because I got other things to memorize. But they do pay attention, and they do know, and they, they do, truthfully.
They do.
They do, it just, it's not fair to this business owner is, is my problem, you know?
It's not fair to this, I, I completely agree, right? But for fi- at least fifteen, eighteen years, however long these things have been going on, they've managed to figure something out.
Well, he's closed a lot of the times. Can I ask, have you had, how many times in this is going on, have, has you, has your store had to be closed?
Uh, well, every time the, the fifth comes around, we're totally closed. But we've managed to work out, um, a deal with the previous owner, John, um, and, uh, other vendors and stuff like that, and, uh, um, you know, even gone to points of, uh, where we've been compensated, uh, stuff like that, I don't wanna say any amounts or anything.
That's, so this is, this is a thing, I mean.
There are other options, is what I'm saying.
Truth, truthfully, I mean, I think the communications between Mark and, and the folks at.
Well, I'm, I'm not disputing that, I was just questioning when, how many times he's had to actually physically close. And is it because the road was entirely shut? Because I know on the fi- fives, it was always completely shut, but we've had.
On the 95th, on the 2000, 2005, 2010, 2015, 2020, so what, what's that, six times?
And there's been some other times, I think, that the entire road has been shut down, and I was thinking that you had to shut down during those times, too.
There's never been another time that the entire road's been shut down, it's been shut down in half, like the mayor said.
I thought there was one more time that, or maybe it was last year when it didn't happen or, or something like that.
They didn't have it last year.
Yeah, well, I know, that's what I'm saying, I'm just thinking in the planning process that came through that way.
And then we figured out a traffic deal when they just closed half the street, but like the mayor mentioned, that was dangerous.
It was extremely dangerous.
I understand that.
That it was.
So.
I'm not an expert, I could, but I can tell you it was dangerous.
No, I, I was just asking how many times they had to shut down and, and, you know, also thinking that due to this COVID, you know, I'm sure that's reduced business for you, too, like all our other area businesses.
That's why I took away our best weekend.
We need to reach out and support these people, too, and especially his busiest time being shut down. That's just not kosher for somebody that's also here.
I understand, I understand. Okay, there was a motion, a second?
Yes.
Do we wanna call?
I'd like to.
Would you call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
No.
Alderperson Akers?
No.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two, okay? And that just, so you can see there's a little dissension up here, I mean, they, they all understand what the, what the issues are. We'll, we'll figure it out, right?
Okay, and I'll look forward to working with Christie Porter here.
Three, two, nine, fifty-three, forty-two, is that your friend over there? Does she have a pen? Do you have a pen? Are you with him? Do you have a pen? Do you have a pen?
Here, we'll write it down.
There's pens, there are pencils up in the.
It's, her number is three, two, nine, fifty.
And in the box, there's pencils.
Okay. Just so there's no confusion, okay?
All right.
Hopefully he'll get his normal payment.
Thank you. Moving along, item, is it thirteen now? Discussion decision to award a contract for project twenty-one fourteen tree planting program to Dan Larson Landscaping in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars. This is the MMST grant, this is the awarding of planting of those trees, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So I'm moved.
Motion by Alderperson Bailey, whose father was an arborist, second by Alderperson Collins, all in favor? Uh, wait, you have to call, we have to call, have to call, sorry.
Alderperson, Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to go to fifteen, I just wanna jump ahead. This is discussion decision to accept a grant from MMST to fund the planting of street trees. We just approved the contract, but we have to approve the acceptance of the grant.
Make a motion to accept the grant?
Motion by Alderperson Bailey, second by Alderperson Collins. May I just reflect, this is, um, a precondition, I suppose, of awarding the contract. So in the event that for some reason the grant falls through, then the contract does as well. Uh, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Okay, then there's sixteen, two, discussion decision to approve a tree maintenance covenant with the Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewage District. This is part of the grant condition that we, there are trees.
Motion, oh, sorry.
And they're gonna, right, just take care of the trees also.
No, we're taking care of, there are trees, we take care of the trees.
Yeah.
This is, this is to say, you're gonna give us the money, we're gonna plant the trees, and because we're so grateful, we'll take care of them.
That's right.
They're in our city and are right away, so.
Yet they are.
All the trees are being our right of.
The good thing about this is that taxpayer dollars aren't being used to fund planting street trees and somebody else's dollars are. Right, okay, motion was made, seconded, right?
No.
Not get the second or moved by.
The arborist has, the arborist's son has to.
We're waiting for Alderperson Bailey to make the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
I will second.
Seconded by Alderperson Collins, covenant is probably a contract, so I'd call.
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, going back to fourteen. Discussion decision to approve an agreement along the construction of a private fence and a permanent city drainage management in the side yard of Nicholas and Amber Marasco, Fortieth and Edgerton. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Castner, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderperson Sarian, I think we have to call this one, too.
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries seventeen, discussion decision to approve the pavement improvement plan twenty-twenty-one update. I'd entertain a motion to approve this plan.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Castner, so next year, instead of reconstructions, we're gonna focus on surfacing, resurfacing.
That's correct, yep, we've made a few changes.
Which will get us more miles. These are the roads that are already fully improved, so. All in favor, did I already do this? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries eighteen, discussion decision to adopt a resolution verifying review and authorizing submission of the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources twenty-twenty compliance maintenance annual report, also known as the CMAR. This is an unfunded mandate that costs us money, but we have to do this. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt a resolution.
Motion by Alderperson Castner, is there a second? Second by Alderperson Akers, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Item nineteen is approve a CSM for proposed combination of three parcels located at fifty-two oh four West Allerton, fifty-two twenty-four West Allerton, and an unaddressed out, add, parcel at South Fifty-second Street that's adjacent to them, submitted by Stephen Jackson and Kim Gross. I'd entertain a motion to approve the CSM.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Castner, is there a second? Second by Alderperson Akers, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Okay, items twenty through twenty-five are all from the recent planning commission meeting held on June eighth. One includes landscaping plans from Iceland Suites, another is a site plan and special use review for a smoke shop at replacing one that exists now at Forty-second and Leighton. Another is for the architectural plans for the patio at Leveres on Fifty-first and Cold Spring. Another is for Monroe's Auto Service, um, which is on fifty, is on Edgerton and Loomis on the northeast corner. And the other, another one, twenty-four, is for the gracious gifts proposed child daycare provider change on South Seventy-sixth Street. And the final is for the local at eighty-four South, a brewery and coffee shop. I'd entertain a motion to approve items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Motion to approve those items, as presented.
Castner, and those are all subject to planning commission comments and stuff, there weren't any problems. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Sarian, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Okay, um, items twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine are outdoor special event applications, the first three are for the.
We take those separate?
We wanna take those separate, so twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight are the House of Harley-Davidson Freedom Music Series events on July tenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first. I'd entertain a motion to approve or deny those outdoor special events. Is there a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Motion by Alderperson Sarian to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Castner, under discussion. Uh, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
No.
Alderperson Akers?
No.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. Twenty-nine, approve the outdoor special event application for Armenian Fest to be located at St. John the Baptist Armenian Apostolic Church at Seventy-eighth and Leighton on July eighteenth. Uh, includes the extension of the premises and everything else that you see there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may also add, the request was to waive all of the fees.
And waive all the fees, as we typically do for nonprofits and churches and stuff.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderperson Akers, is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Alderperson Collins, all in fa- uh, let's vote on that since it's had a financial impact.
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Okay, thirty is approve the special use review for Honey Berry, the restaurant at forty-nine hundred South Seventy-sixth Street. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Collins, second by Alderperson Castner.
No, that was Bailey.
Bailey, second.
Oh, Bailey, I'm sorry, would you please?
You sounded like.
Alderperson Collins?
Oh, was you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, it was?
I thought we both, okay, nevermind.
I don't care.
I think that's like your second mistake tonight.
I know, I'm gonna roll.
The only thing good, though, is the Bucks are winning.
Are they winning?
Up for fourteen.
They're up fourteen in what quarter, third?
Just in the first.
So the second was Castner.
Okay, could you call?
Okay, Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries, okay, items thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine are all from the finance committee meeting. They involved just.
Thirty-one was not, thirty-one was not financed.
Oh, it wasn't, I'm sorry. So item thirty-one, I'd entertain a motion to approve the service agreement for free one-time shredding services to our community.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Collins, second by Alderperson Akers, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Thank you.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Yeah, speaking of the Bucks, I'd much rather be here.
Do we know when this shredding event is? When is it?
I don't like that city either.
Do we know when it, the shredding event is?
The event will be held, uh, September twenty-fifth, um, and I know there is discussion here over the course of the year about not having the cleanup greenup day, um, but that also is the rescheduled cleanup and greenup day.
Right.
So Morgan does have a flyer for everybody so we could organize your volunteer groups.
Or maybe we could shred our garbage.
Yeah.
Uh, no, but yes.
So motion was made, seconded, are we voting now already?
Yes, we did.
Okay, items thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven, thirty, thirty-eight, thirty-nine are the finance committee meeting stuff. I'd entertain a motion to approve those items as presented.
I move for approval.
I will second.
Motion by Alderperson Sarian, second by Alderperson Collins, they relate to financial statements and accepting the auditor's report. Budget increase for a hydro excavator sewer jet that comes from the sanitary sewer fund. Uh, updating job descriptions, approving a lease for a new mailing system. Uh, the agreement with, for WIC with the West House Department and dispersments, reimbursements, investments, and reinvestments. Motion was made and seconded, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Castner?